We have a request to adjourn 5:15, 5:54 Hill Street.
Samud.
Second.
On favor? Aye. Now, we're gonna have to skip around because our in-rye consultant is caught in traffic jam. So, we'll go down to the Southampton Hospital, 240 Meeting House Lane. I see Wayne is here for that.
Good evening, Board members. Wayne Bruin, O'Shea Marsh, Simpson, and Boone. We can make this somewhat brief. If you recall, last meeting, the board forwarded a letter to the planning board regarding coordination of the seeker process, and the planning board did, in fact, accept your offer to be lead agency. Since that time, with respect to your consultant's report, all the matters that were in that report have been addressed. I believe you have a new submission that has been forwarded to your consultant. I believe our engineer's been in discussion with them, and they have everything they need. We expect this matter to be discussed favorably at the next planning board meeting, in the next two Mondays, and so that would put you in a position to continue the application at your next meeting. I'm also, would like to report that, if you recall, with respect to the certificate of occupancy issues, that the hospital had hired a national consultant with respect to firearm safety matters, and that report was delivered to the hospital in the last two weeks and was delivered to the Village Fire Marshal's office. And there was a meeting last Friday between the fire marshal, the building inspector, the mayor, and my clients, and I believe there was, it was somewhat successful in moving things forward. So, I have not heard the final report yet. I think there's still some review being done by the fire marshal's office, but so that's in the works as well.
So, now it's in the hands, into the planning board, right?
Yes.
And then you'll have to come back and say after they have made their decision?
I believe so. Their decision is just with respect to seeker only.
Yeah, we can't do anything further until the planning board renders it seeker determination. So, we should adjourn it for all purposes and see what happens at the planning board.
I move we adjourn this application for all purposes.
One second.
Thank you.
On favor? Wayne, while you're there, all these cases between this one and your next one have to do with the wetlands. So, if you'd like to do Halsey Street right now.
I'm actually waiting for my clients from New York State.
They're all stuck in the R E.
That's where their consultant is.
We could all go home, I guess.
Maybe do Sullivan to start.
Well, we can do the Heller Family Trust, number 2770. Do we have anybody here for the Heller Family Trust? Mr. Walker?
Jim Walker from Interscience for the Heller Family 1996 Trust. It's a wetlands restoration project, fairly similar to the one the board approved for Anthony Paduano on Lake Agawam. What we're going to do is remove the fragmites by hand, and then we're gonna plant back wetland species where the fragmites is, and we are going to plant wetlands buffer plants around the periphery of the wetlands. Since this board opened the public hearing at your last meeting, we were asked to do a couple of housekeeping items. They've been done on the plans. The plans now show a complete plant list, including the wetlands plants that are gonna be planted in the intertidal marsh and in the high marsh area. Those were housekeeping items. Basically, the design narrative had all the plants on, but the planting plan was omitting a couple of plants. We did one thing for New York State DEC that the board should be aware of. The Village Wetlands line that was done by Dave Emelida, a while ago, 1995, was required to be updated. So, I flagged a new, I flagged a new wetlands line. Wetlands lines that are more than 10 years old, generally by New York State DEC, have to be updated. So, I updated the wetlands line and submitted a new survey and an updated planting plan, both to the village and to the state, and that's it. This is not a difficult project. It is a hand digging of common reed with a shovel and a wheelbarrow. It takes a couple of weekends to dig the material out, and then we plant back the plant material. We did get a phone call from the adjacent property owner's attorney, and they were asking if the, the black vinyl fence could be behind shrubs, and in any case, the way that this planting plan is done is there's a row of shrubs along the driveway and along the street, and in between that row of shrubs and the, and the next row of shrubs is a six-foot vinyl fence. The black vinyl fence kinda is hidden no matter what, but the plants on both sides of it make it very secure. It keep the deer out of the wetlands area where the wetlands plants are gonna grow. If the deer were in there, they'd eat them all up and wouldn't be any reason to do the job. So, we've already accomplished that. I spoke to the, the adjoining property owner's attorney, and he seemed to understand what was going on. But basically, it's a row of shrubs that grow up to about four to six feet. There's a fence here, and then there's another row of shrubs, and basically, it makes it like a little gumdrop when it's finished. It's very attractive, and nobody sees the fence. So, that's it for adjoining property owner concerns. I'd be happy to answer any questions the zoning board might have.
Yeah, I believe it.
Has a check got, have you gotten this to check?
Yeah.
Till I get a, he's late, so.
Well, we couldn't, couldn't get approved till next meeting anyway. I think we have done everything that check expected. We've done everything that the state expected. If the board can try to move it ahead for the next meeting and approve it, then that's fine with me.
I don't think we have any comments, are there?
Very similar to the Paduano project you just approved. It's well underway on Lake Agawam, and looks like it's gonna be a real nice success.
You hear anything?
We could adjourn it for decisions subject to any additional information which our environmental consultant might require.
You have any comments from the public on this application? So, that's what we'll do, right?
Okay.
I move we adjourn for decisions save for comments by our environmental consultant.
One second.
On favor?
Aye. Thank you.
What's over here?
Let's see, that's a dog. Blackspastarose is a dog.
Sure, one-on-one first neck lane was. Editions. Which one?
Isn't one-on-one first neck lane, wasn't that just a bunch of additions?
Oh, yeah, that's a tennis court.
That one's a tennis court?
Tennis court, yes.
Oh, which one? Oh, Halsey.
That's a tennis court. I think it's gonna do with the wetlands, so we could probably do that one.
Yeah.
We have someone here for case number 2774, Taylor. One-on-one first neck lane?
Gil's handling that one. Can we put it off for a second?
He's outside.
We're doing a go-kart.
I think Gil's out in the hall.
He was right here.
He was just here a minute ago, yeah. Gil, come in.
You calling, Taylor?
Yeah, we have things out of order, so.
What about Sullivan, 'cause that, that's not a wetlands case. In fact, I.
Yeah, we can do Sullivan.
Yeah, that's Sullivan, I think was.
Tennis court, right?
That's a tennis court. Yeah, that's me, too, so if I could do that.
Want to do that one first?
Yeah, we're doing it.
Sullivan, uh. Is he about to? Mm-hmm. So, we do 2771, Sullivan, 1116 Meadow Lane.
Sorry about that. Be ready for the year. Okay, for the applicant, Gilbert G. Flanagan, 21 South Main Street, Southampton. I have an affidavit opposing, an affidavit, a mailing. Okay, this is an application of a familiar type to you, namely, a request to permit a tennis court in a front yard of oceanfront property, although not in the required front yard. I would submit it's a fairly straightforward kind of application. We meet the 90-foot setback. We're not requesting any dimensional relief. As you know, tennis courts and front yards are fairly typical of this stretch of the beach. I submitted with the application a tax map that shows a vast number of properties with tennis courts and front yards, including the properties on both sides of this property. If you need further backup information on the nature of the variances, granted, you may remember that last August, I had a case called Meadow Court, and in that case, I submitted all the variance decisions that went along, and basically, I took the Meadow Court information and updated it slightly. I can give you those if, if you want, but I've listed the setbacks that were allowed by all of those variances, and that they predominate in the area. So, I would submit that this, this would make, make reasonable sense, and of course, the court would be sunk in at least four feet below grade. It would need to get planning board site plan approval. We've submitted with the application the landscape plans prepared by George Lynch, which show the details, including the sinking. You may wonder, when you visited the property, in order to get into it, you had to go in through the property next door, which I think I indicated in a letter that I submitted to you before the work session. And as you probably know, my client controls the property to the east. You may have also seen some activity at this site, and that, that is the result of a curb cut and a driveway change, which my client has a permit for from the building department. And I'll, just so that you have that for the record, I'll, I'll submit it. I didn't make copies for everybody, 'cause I thought you didn't need them, but I'll submit them. So, it's not a question of them jumping the gun on this. They are, they're changing the driveway, so this property will now have its own driveway, whereas before, it, it took its access through the adjoining property. So, I think that it's a fairly straightforward application. I know we have a long agenda. Do you have any questions?
No. Do we have any questions? No. Nick?
Questions?
So, it just needs the front yard, and it's gonna be 90 feet.
Correct.
And it meets the setbacks on the side yards.
Yes, it does. All it needs is relief to be in the front yard, but not the required front yard, right?
You're running out of room, so like to heard of this application?
I have a question, though. I mean, they looped the driveway all the way around, like they encircled the whole tennis court?
No, they're gonna, they're gonna redo that. Let me just get the plan out. Yeah, I think that's, that's what they, that's what they wanna do. They wanna be able to circle around it, and of course, that.
It just pushes it closer to the westerly property line. It's a lot of driveway on here.
Yeah, is it, you know, it meets the setback, and obviously, what it faces is the tennis court from, on the property to the west of it, as you can see.
They've got, already got a permit for this whole driveway?
Yeah, they do. That's, that's what I submitted.
That's what he just gave up.
That's what I just handed up. I, I think I have another copy of it.
There's more than enough copies of it.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, here it is. In fact, it shows on the map, there's an approved plan here. All they actually needed on this was a curb cut that you don't need, as you probably know, when you get inside a lot, you don't need any special permit for a driveway. But as you can see, there's an existing circular arrangement, and the tennis court is gonna go essentially where that is.
Want to do it?
Yeah.
This application is consistent with our policy regarding tennis courts on oceanfront parcels and is consistent with the character of the neighborhood information submitted by the applicant's attorney, period. Therefore, we grant a front yard variance in order to permit a, the proposed tennis court in a front yard with a street setback of 90 feet, comma, 90 feet being the minimum street setback requirement applicable to this property.
I move we accept this decision as offered.
I'll second.
On favor?
Aye.
Now, we can go back to our normal agenda, which would be case number 2766, Philip and Nina Edwards, 395 First Neck Lane.
For the applicant, Gilbert G. Flanagan, 21 South Main Street, Southampton. This is a continuing application. As you know, we had a fairly lengthy presentation at the end of January, and since then, we've done some additional examination, as requested by the board. You may remember that the matter was kept open, I think largely because a neighbor appeared at the end of the presentation and asked for additional time to review the application. I also have with me this evening, who will give some testimony and information, David Emelida, who, as you may remember, was the village planning consultant for a number of years, and who has expertise in wetlands and wetlands-related matters. Just to recap a few things since the last presentation, we have made a couple of submissions, and I wanna make sure that you have them in the file, so that the file is deemed complete. One of the things we submitted with a letter of February 15th was a letter from this office, and also a, an accompanying letter from James Lynch regarding the Leyland Cypress trees which are planted along the north property line, which this property shares with Robin Wamboldt, who had raised some questions at the initial hearing. We submitted also a series of photographs that show the existence of those Leyland Cypress trees. Now, one of the interesting and important things about Leyland Cypress, what I'm told, is that they are a very hardy plant that grows very prolifically and very quickly, and they, these trees that are there will, will fill out substantially within a very short time. One of the things we also found out is that, given where the wetlands jurisdictions are for planting, you would be able to plant an additional Leyland Cypress to the east and three or four more on the southerly side. And you may remember that we had showed, the pictures show plantings on both sides of the proposed guesthouse. So, as a condition of the, of any approval you might grant, we would be willing to plant, do additional screening in that area. Now, along with that point, you should also have received from us a revised site plan, which shows the 125-foot wetlands setback for planting. The, the map we filed with the application obviously had the septic system setback and the building setback, but didn't originally have the, the planting setback, which now shows on the site plan. So, what you should be working with is a site plan, last revised February 2nd, 2013. on the Wamboldt property and the wetlands on the Edwards property. This was submitted back in February. If you look at the bottom, in the lower left-hand corner, there's a series of revision dates, and it should be last revised 2/2/2013. If you don't, if you don't have that, I can see that you get more, but I know we submitted, I think, 10 copies of it.
When was it submitted?
It's in February, and it was, the map was last revised February 2, 2013. It's kinda difficult to find.
The one I got right now.
Down there. You should have it.
Revised 2/2/13?
That's it. That's the one. Okay.
Yeah, we have the survey revised 2/2/13.
2/2/13.
2/2/13?
2/2/13.
It's a very small print.
Very small print, right below where the pond is.
Gil, I can hardly see that.
Well, I haven't got glasses, I can see it.
I didn't used to wear glasses, Gil, you know.
I didn't either, until.
You were gonna drive me to.
Until I was in sixth grade, I didn't either. Okay, so that's the survey, the site plan that we should be working from and reviewing this application. Now, since the January meeting, I see that there have been two submissions made by Michael Walsh, who I understand represents Robin Wamboldt, and we reviewed those submissions, and I submitted a memo dated April 24th, which attempts to address certainly the issues raised in that, in those two submissions, and those issues include the jurisdictional issue, the wetlands mapping accuracy issue, alternate locations, and additional considerations. And I recognize you probably haven't had a chance fully to study that, but I wanna make sure that that's part of the record, because I believe that what I said in that memo, coupled with what Dave Emelida and I will say tonight, should adequately address any issues raised in those submittals. One thing that I don't know if appeared in my memo, I think it did, it's important to note, and if you visited the site, one of the suggestions was there may be another as-of-right location for a relocated guesthouse. It turns out there is a, approximately a 120-year-old linden tree in the middle of that so-called as-of-right area, and if you visited the site, you, you can't miss it, so it would, certainly, we would not want to remove that tree, especially since this was part of a property that was once known as twin linden because of that tree and one other. With, with respect to the wetlands issue, which appears to be an issue of some interest, I understand that the village planning consultant, Mr. Voorhees, has submitted a memo to the board, which indicates agreement with the wetlands line that was shown on the submission that we made. I understand that Mr. Walsh and his client have had a submittal made by a, an environmental consulting firm, which purports to question that jurisdictional, that, that wetlands boundary, rather. And I would like to say, at the outset, that I was somewhat interested and a little bit surprised to see that, on the face page of that submittal, which you received last week, these people viewed the property on April 4th, 2013. Well, I, I let state for the record that neither my client nor I nor anyone related to my client or myself gave any permission for that. So, as far as I'm concerned, that was a trespass, and I really think you ought to disregard it. And I would specifically make that statement for the record and ask you to take that into consideration, because this was not authorized by us, wasn't authorized by me, and it's not authorized by the code. That having been said, we do have some comments about that submittal, and obviously, we reserve our rights to continue to, to object to it in the, in the first instance, and I think it's important that we address them, because we believe that they are without merit. And in such connection, I would like to introduce Dave Emelida, who has appeared on other applications, and I would like to have Dave come forth and submit some additional information and give some testimony on this particular matter. Dave, if you would come forth. Now, before Dave starts, I'd like to ask you a few questions. Particularly, Dave, would you tell the board for the record what your qualifications are as an environmental consultant?
Okay, sure. I was your planning and environmental consultant from, I believe, 1987 to 2005. I'm probably responsible as much as anywhere, as anybody, for Article 3A being in the village code, having written the, the legislation, shepherding it through the public hearing and adoption process, and then applying to the New York State DEC for delegation under Part 665 of the state freshwater wetlands regulations, and, and the Village of Southampton thereby became the first village in the state of New York to be delegated freshwater wetland permitting under the state's Freshwater Wetland Act.
And Dave, your, your training is in this area and other areas, wetlands being among the specialties, I understand.
Yes, wetlands and environmental planning in general, and of course, overall comprehensive community planning.
And Dave, you've had opportunity to visit the site and to review the submission, submittals in the, in the application.
I've been at the site several times, first in March, then again in beginning of April, and in, and then most recently, today.
Okay, and I'd like you to, I understand you have two memoranda that you'd like to submit to the, to the board.
I do.
And I'd like you to discuss each one of those memorandums, maybe the first being the environmental benefit memorandum, which would be the first, the one that we.
Yeah, this is April, this, the first memorandum I'm going to hand up. It's dated April 24th, in which I report on the verification. I was asked to examine the 2009 wetland line to see if it still was up to date and current and reflected the field conditions, and I visited the site first on March 21st, and on that day, based on examining the vegetation, the, taking some soil samples, the slope of the property, and the permanent surface waters, I found that that 2009 wetland line was still current and should be the appropriate wetland line to be used for jurisdictional purposes on this application. I then took a look at the application itself, and because, even though it was presented to you as not having to need a wetlands permit, I took, I took the view that I should examine it in, for its compliance with Article 3A of the village code, that is, your wetlands regulations. The first objective criterion in the village code is contained in Section 116-194. In fact, all, all the, all the conditions for permit issuance are contained in that section, and the first objective criterion is contained in 19.4C, and that regards compliance with the state freshwater wetlands regulations. Of course, one must go back to the parent set of regulations. Do we comply with the state regulations? And we find that this application does. The proposed activity lies beyond the minimum statewide minimum setback, which is 100 feet, the statewide minimum setback, and of course, the village in adopting its own freshwater wetlands regulations expanded upon that, upon that setback, and the application also complies with Article 3A, therefore, by default, complies with the state freshwater wetlands regulations. Section 116, 194D also states that, "In granting, denying, or limiting a permit, the approving authority shall also consider the effect of the proposed activity with reference to public health, safety, and welfare, fish and wildlife, flood, hurricane, storm dangers, and the protection or enhancement of the several functions of wetlands and the benefits derived therefrom." The proposed project, which is essentially a relocation of an accessory cottage and an existing septic system that are currently not conforming with Article 3A into a location that does conform with Article 3A. Both the cottage and the septic system move 70 feet further away from wetlands. In the case of the cottage, moving from 80 feet to 150 feet away, and in case of the septic system, moving from 130 feet to 200 feet away. And in addition, the septic system, which we believe, although I'm not an expert, does not comply with County Department of. not comply with County Department of Health Service regulations, the new septic system would have to comply with, would have to be approved by the Suffolk County Department of Health Services. In addition, by moving the septic system leaching pools farther away from groundwater, raising it up and moving it farther away, would have, tend to have, an improvement on the water quality conditions in the northern end of Cooper's Neck Pond. Further, in granting any zoning relief, your board has the authority under the village code to achieve other environmental benefits as you so see fit, such as runoff recharge, pervious pavement, indigenous landscaping, and buffers. So the proposed project is in keeping with the spirit and intent and the letter of the regulation contained in the village wetland code. But that memo is dated yesterday, April twenty-fourth. We then, I then yesterday, received a copy of a letter from an environmental consultant opposing the application, and was asked to comment on that letter together with its attachments. And so I'm going to hand up now a memo dated today. I have my own copy here. It's short, like the first one, just two pages. Commenting on some of the major points made in the letter from Barton and Loguitis, if I am pronouncing that correctly, to you with respect to the Edwards' application. First of all, let me describe the situation with the wetlands that are on site. The applicant, and of course, myself and the village environmental consultant don't dispute there are wetlands on the site, of course there are wetlands on the site. The use of the New York State Environmental Resource Mapper by the opponents, and that is a copy of a portion of the state website printout in their memo, the use of that mapper is a good guide to the potential presence of wetlands of statewide significance, but the mapper itself is not a definitive delineation of onsite wetlands. The mapper itself contains such a disclaimer, and most of what is shown on the property is in the quote "check zone" on the map, meaning you have to go out and check. You can't take the literal map and say that there are wetlands here. My previous memo stated that we did that and verified the two thousand and nine wetland line, so there are wetlands on the site, the two thousand line is correct, in my opinion it's correct. Now, outside of the wetlands, the opponents raise an issue about some wetland species being found. What I'm going to hand up now are three photos. The first, the first photo is taken from the lawn area. I'll make sure I have enough copies. Is taken from the lawn area into the meadow that lies to the west of the agreed-upon flag area, the two thousand and nine flag area. The second set of photos is taken farther away, viewing from the west into the area that has been flagged as wetlands through this so-called, through this meadow area. And the third set of photos is taken within the meadow area looking south.
Those photos, by the way, were all taken today.
Those photos are current, I did, I took those photos today. So those are, those are current conditions. Now, this meadow area rises slightly from the, from the flag wetlands to the property line, it's a three or four-foot rise in elevation. It's characterized by low-growing meadow grasses with several maple trees with beech, birch, and other hardwood trees interspersed throughout the meadow. Barton and Loguitis claim the presence of certain obligate herbaceous vegetation in its memo, and names two of them, the two that they do name, a Carax stricte and Junkus effusus. Now, obligate means, in wetland parlance, it's most assuredly occurs only in a wetland, that's, wetland speak for this is a wetland plant. Okay. To verify that, I went out with two standard manuals. First, Freshwater Wetlands, A Guide to Common Indicator Plants in the Northeast by Dennis McGee, and second, Field Guide to Non-Titled Wetland Identification by Ralph Tyner, who is the father of wetland regulations in this country, believe he, he is it. And took those two manuals and looked at the species that the opponents claimed were there, tried to find them. Nothing out there matched description of Carax stricte, nothing, no plant, no species out there, no herbaceous species out there matched what the manual said they had to be. So as far as the manuals are concerned, in my own opinion, that species does not exist. And in fact, Tyner issues a caveat on page sixty-six of his manual, he says, he says that proper identification of sedges, which Carax stricte is a sedge, requires examination of the periginia, meaning the coating, the actual seed coating itself, you really have to get detailed, and a reference to a taxonomic manual. Well, the memo prepared by the opponent's consultant makes no reference to this kind of, this type of methodology. Looks like they just walked out there, pointed their finger at something and said, oh, that's a Carax stricte. You can't do that, it's not that simple. We did find scattered species of rush in the meadow area, and they, and if you look at the photos, they are the scattered tufts, they look like spit curls that are standing up, isolated. They probably are some kind of rush, but, and they might even be the Junkus effusus that the consultant claims they are, but they're so scattered, and they're so thin, that nowhere could they be classified as dominant, there's no location where they even occupy as much as 10% of the ground area. So it, they, it's, if you follow the wetland keys in Tyner, and the applicant's consultant knows what I'm talking about, you have to reach the conclusion that this is not a wetland. In fact, Tyner himself classifies this species as a fact wet, plus, again, it means it likes wetlands, but it can live outside of wetlands. It's not an obligate, it's not a mandatory wetland plant. So on the basis of vegetation, this area claimed to be a wetland by the opponent's consultant is not a wetland. Furthermore, we took some soil borings, 20 to 30 feet west of the flag area, in other words, in the alleged wetland, in the alleged wetland zone, to a depth of two feet, took a boring to two feet and kept pulling up and examining what we found. We find a brown silty upper layer, which is consistent with a low-lying landscape, and then that transition to a tannish loam means it became more grainy at about eighteen feet, eighteen inches, I'm sorry. We didn't find any models, and wetland people know what they are, which would be indicative of anaerobic conditions or frequently wet conditions that would favor hydrophytic or water-dependent vegetation. Those models were not present in the soil samples. So on the basis of, and it was also, there was no standing water down to a depth of eighteen inches, which I believe is the standard contained in the code. So this doesn't, this area does not pass the test as being a wetland, a simple conclusion, it's not a wetland. I'd just like to make a few remarks about the allegations of clearing in this area and beyond it. The opponent's consultant uses Google Earth as his basis, and no other evidence is presented, but unfortunately for them and for you, it doesn't offer you any proof because it compares a growing season aerial photograph with a winter season aerial photograph, and so you're at a total loss as to try to determine what was, what was growing and what was cleared on the basis of the photography. Also, the photos don't tell you exactly what you're looking at. If you're looking at a shrub, a tree, vines, the photo in two thousand and ten shows you a lot of green, but it doesn't show you what it is, you know, what condition it is or what species it is. Now, removing diseased, damaged, or invasive vegetation, of course, does not require any wetland permit, and neither does the trimming or thinning of healthy vegetation to maintain vigorous growth. So that could have been a plausible reason for the removal if it, if it in fact happened, and I myself couldn't tell you that it happened. Those could be equally valid reasons. So there's really no proof of any, of any wetland violation or any illegal clearing on the basis of that type of photography. And then finally, the opponents make a, make some charges about the approvability of the proposed septic system. Well, an application has not been filed with the Health Department yet, to my knowledge, and of course, the Health Department would have to, would have to approve the, a new septic system, and so the comments that the opponent makes in its memo is purely speculative and unnecessary. Those are my comments for this evening, I'll be happy to handle any questions the board
Yeah, just a couple of other points. Thank you, Dave. I would also note and remind you that the northerly neighbor is the only neighbor who's apparently voiced any objections or concerns with respect to this application. I believe I mentioned at the initial hearing, obviously this property is, this proposed guest house is located in the northwest corner of the property, and there are two properties that, but that, and I believe I indicated at the initial hearing that when this application was first noticed, I got communications from both of those people, either directly or through a representative, that they had no objection to the application. In fact, if you look at the surveys and the pictures that were submitted, the house in the extreme northwest corner opposite is actually closer than the Wambold house, and they had no objection. Furthermore, since the last meeting, I received a, an email from one of the people who received the notice, as we were required to give under the code, and it's the owner of the property at three-seventy-first Neck Lane who is diagonally across the street, indicating not only no objection, but actually support of the application, and I have copies of that, which I will submit to you, the email and also the tax map showing the relative location. Just to recap, what we consider to be the positive aspects of this application, the new construction will be 100% in conformance with the wetlands law, as opposed to the existing condition, which is not. The existing condition, bear in mind, is a legal, non-conforming, pre-existing condition. Second of all, as I pointed out in that rather thick inter-science submission I made at the first hearing, we have determined through extensive research that this is the only property within the village that has this set of conditions, that is, a lawful, pre-existing accessory dwelling or guest house, which is, which violates the current wetland setbacks, where we can move it to a location that is, that is conforming. Even though we don't need a wetlands permit for this, and that's, but although Dave Emelita addressed the fact how this is consistent with the wetlands law, I would point out that a grant of this application would certainly be consistent with and in furtherance of the policy that is set forth in the wetlands law. A comment was made, I think, at the last meeting that granting this application would result in increased traffic, as I pointed out to you, at that hearing, there's a house and a guest house now, and when this is done, there would be a house and a guest house. And the purpose of it is, as I mentioned, there are two, there were brother and a sister in their families who inherited the property from their parents who bought it about 40 years ago, and their intention is to continue as families to use the property together and not to sell it. So in order to do that, because they are both separate, they both have children, they have expressed a desire to have two separate buildings, which they already do now, but the size is an issue. One thing I mentioned also at the initial hearing is that we originally had thought that we might be able to locate a cellar under this guest house and thereby reduce the gross floor area calculation, but it turns out that physically, because of the depth to groundwater, to get a full cellar, which doesn't count toward GFA, would not be possible, so that's why the configuration is what it is. The final two points, we have agreed to install additional screening to buffer the proposed construction from the neighbor to the north and the neighbors to the west, and we'd be happy to have that as a condition. We would suggest the Lea and Cypress, which apparently are very vigorous in growing, and they're fairly, they're fairly hardy. So I think that concludes my principal comments. The Edwardses want to keep this in their family, they don't want to have to sell the property and have a McMansion constructed there, which would probably, would probably happen. And as an aside, I think I mentioned at the initial hearing, because this property is in the historic district, previously, the Edwardses got a determination from the ARB that both of these buildings, the house, the main house and the guest house, could be demolished, so there's no problem with historic preservation. I thank you for your time, Dave and I will be, oh, there's one other thing I wanted to offer before I sit down. One of the things that my clients want to do in constructing this guest house is to make it probably the most totally energy-sufficient building ever built in the village, and they would intend to have some elevations of it. The south-facing side of it would contain glass to capture the sunlight, and the north side, and the west side would be substantially solid. Now, it's important for the northerly neighbor to note that on the north side of the house, no windows are proposed, strictly a door. It would also be proposed, actually to plant on the sides of the building, so that the building itself would act as a screen, which I think is rather unusual, so I'll offer you copies of that. Thank you. Any questions?
Yeah, if we decide to go forward with approval on this, there's an existing building that would end up coming down.
Yes.
Existing septic system that would have to come out.
Yes.
Then we'd have to, you'd have to run electric and water through the property back to the, where the new cottage, which is sort of skirting the wetlands. If, if, if it looked like we were going to vote any affirmative, can we get a narrative of, you know, like, you sometimes just to make sure.
Sure.
You know, we're staying as far away from any wetlands.
Absolutely.
That where you're trenching, where the fill's going, you know, parking, you know, the whole narrative that we usually ask for.
Right.
Would that be?
Sure, particularly with respect to trenching for you two. Particularly with respect to trenching for utilities and all of that and access.
Well, I noticed on this plan, they show like a water line, and it sort of cuts like close to the wetlands.
Yeah, we can certainly, we can show that, absolutely. Be happy to do it.
Does the board have anything else right now? Rick?
No questions.
Rick?
Nope.
If anyone in the audience would like to be heard to this application.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Michael G. Walsh, 860 Montauk Highway Watermill, and I represent Robin Wamboldt, who appeared at the last hearing and has appeared at your work sessions in connection with her strenuous objections to this application. Let me start by saying that the fascinating thing about what I was able to do was simply look at the submissions that have been made to you in this case to date, and I was able to create a framework of arguments just using the materials that have been submitted to show you that you have absolutely no authority to approve this application that's submitted. And I say that because I look at the application, and the first thing that the applicant says in their application is they admit that fact. They said, while the applicant recognizes, and I'm reading from the application, that granting an expansion of a non-conforming condition such as this by more than 50% is not something that the Board of Appeals would normally consider. I'll stop there for a moment, and I'll ask you, why is it that your board would not normally consider such an application? And that statement's made by Mr. Flanagan in the application, who, after your board, and the gentleman who films the hearings, I think spends more time in this room than any of us. The reason is that it's pretty well settled in this village and most of the towns and villages that we practice in, that when it comes to pre-existing, non-conforming uses, you cannot expand those uses more than 50%. And you've been through that ad nauseam in this room, many, many, many cases. I'm not going to belabor it. You have a limitation in your code that says, "Your jurisdiction in this special permit or special variance situation is to permit an expansion of what exists on the date that the building became pre-existing." And the application tells it that was 570 square feet. So if you do the math, at best, at best, assuming arguendo, you could approve this application, the maximum building that could be built in that site is 50% of the 570, which gives you a building of approximately 855 square feet. There's absolutely no authority in the zoning code, and I'll get to the wetlands ordinance in a moment, that gives you jurisdiction to go one square foot above 855 feet. You also have an 800-foot, square-foot accessory building limitation that you're familiar with, again, referenced in the application. And the applicant tells you that they're looking for relief not only from the 50% rule, but the 800-square-foot limitation. So when it comes to the zoning code, if this wetlands issue was not before you, we have an admission from the applicant, in their own application, that you would not consider this application under any circumstances. When I first looked at the application, my client brought me the file. I looked at the history of the prior variants. And what I saw was a 1999 survey that's part of your package of documents. And I've also brought along a copy of the decision with a copy of that survey attached to it. And the fascinating thing about this parade of environmental consultants that's been brought before you, I think Mr. Voorhees spoke earlier, early in the hearing process and at the work sessions. Rich Warren from Interscienc put in a report. Now, we have Dave Amelita talking about wetlands. What's fascinating to me is you have two documents before you concerning the wetlands line that we're discussing this evening. And the person who flagged that wetlands line, or the firm, has not appeared. If you look at these, if you look at these surveys, N Consultants, their offices over in North Sea, you're familiar with Roy Hagee, who's now retired, Susanna Butler, and Rob, I don't recall his last name, the other three principals of the firm. You hear from everyone but the firm that delineated the wetlands in the first instance. Back in 2000, when you granted variance relief for this same cottage we're talking about, there was a wetlands line on the map that was flagged by N Consultants in 1999. And then we come, Mr. Flanagan comes before you with the more recent application, and we see that N Consultants went back, apparently, in 2009, and reflagged the wetlands again. They're not before you, you haven't heard from them. And I ask you to question that, why are they not here? Maybe they'll come to the next hearing, maybe they'll put something in the record. The other interesting observation is the 1999 wetlands line that was flagged by N Consultant is entirely different than the 2009 line. I don't know if your board has looked at these lines, substantially different. The first wetlands line, which again was drawn for purposes of the 2000 variance application, was a very, very tight wetlands line. Only the border of the water, in essence, or the wetlands plants bordering the water, was flagged. I just want to hold up my submission that I gave you. That little blue, looks like a little peninsula, was what was flagged in 1999. I highlighted it, this is the survey that's in the file. Then come this application. We have an entirely different wetlands line depicted by the green line surrounding that little blue, I'll call it a peninsula of wetlands. Two entirely different lines. The other interesting observation is that when the second wetlands line was drawn, it just so happened that the 150-foot setback that was drawn sets the building, this 1,700-square-foot building, in precisely, in precisely the correct setback, the minimum setback from both the rear yard and the side yard. So it's very interesting. It would appear, it would appear that the building was sited and then the line was drawn. Why do I say that? Because it is almost impossible, almost impossible, given what you have in your record from 1999, that you could draw a wetlands line and then draw the zoning setbacks and have a perfect building envelope for the 1,700-square-foot building. And when I'm talking perfect, there's not an inch to spare on either side. So what's happened here is we believe the wetlands line has been manipulated by a consultant. I'm not disparaging these people. It's been changed in such a way as to only permit the sighting of this building in the corner of the property adjacent to my client's property. So when I saw that, what did I do? I asked my client, "Who flagged your wetlands?" Well, for both of these applications, it turns out, N Consultants. Both the 2000 application and your present application was the Wamboldt wetlands. The pond was flagged by N Consultants. Again, very different results, very different results. So the question you have to ask, and by the way, they didn't ask permission, and they were there, as we understand it, at least on two occasions, if not more, and the surveyor was on Robin Wamboldt's property as well. There was never any permission asked to inspect those wetlands. You have to ask yourself, how can you rely on a wetlands line, by the way, which was flagged, apparently, there was four flaggings occurred, two of the Edwards wetland and two of the Wamboldt wetland. Different results in each case. So how can you trust the line that's on that map if, A, the consultant who flagged it, who, by the way, is very busy, I see them at all the board meetings, is not before you and has made no submission? How can you trust this wetlands line if you're looking at the results from the same consultant flagging the same wetlands? Entirely different lines, entirely different lines. I say you can't.
Can I ask you just one question? Are you telling us that N Consultants did the flagging in 2000 and 2009?
That is correct.
At both times? Well, couldn't there have been some sort of a change in those years?
Could there have been?
Yeah.
Yes, but our expert will tell you.
The same ones did it.
There has been a change, there has been a change. The change is the clearing that our consultant will tell you about. But as far as the location of the wetlands, we don't believe they've changed, no.
It was done by the same firm.
That is correct.
Firm that is not involved in this current application.
Apparently, they're involved because they flagged the wetlands line that's on your permit, your application survey.
They're not here before us.
They're not testifying, they're not testifying.
They're not part of the applicant's case, they're not part of your case.
We also have our own wetlands consultant that we asked to confirm those wetlands. So you were asking, well, who's going to check this out? That's what we have a consultant for.
Okay. And there's been no change, as far as I can see, with respect to the line that's presently on the survey. I just want to say that for the record. So what we did is we got our own wetlands expert, you'll hear from him in a moment. So we know that absent this wetlands issue, this board has no jurisdiction to approve this application. Then I look further at the application, and it's explained that because of the wetlands issue, that somehow this board has authority to not only permit the expansion of this building by over 300%, but you also have authority, using the wetlands ordinance provisions, to approve it in a different location. And we're also told in the same breath, which I find particularly amazing, that because of the wetlands issue and the wetland situation, as Mr. Flanagan said at the January 24 meeting, that the wetlands ordinance somehow gives you authority to increase the size of the building beyond that which the dimensional regulations prohibit you from doing. So I looked at the wetlands ordinance, what's it tell us? "The zoning board of appeals may vary other dimensional regulations to achieve maximum wetlands setbacks." Very important language. The applicant tells us that the application submitted to you achieves the maximum wetland setbacks, and they don't need a wetlands permit. They need no variance, they need no wetland special permit. They don't need to apply the wetlands ordinance at all to this particular case. They don't need a permit from you. So how is it that when the application is fully compliant with respect to the wetlands ordinance, that rather than build the building at the 800-square-foot maximum size or the 855-square-foot maximum size, somehow they get a zoning bonus, somehow, without requiring a wetlands setback variance, without requiring a wetlands permit, and without triggering the application of the wetlands ordinance at all, that the dimensional regulations are varied by your board to give them more than the maximum 50% that they're allowed? There's absolutely no basis for that, particularly when they're telling you that they can meet the wetland setback in any event. They could meet it if they built the building in compliance with the zoning code, that is, if they built the 800-square-foot building or if they built the 855-square-foot building. I just want to hand in for the record two cases on the topic from the second department, which stand for the proposition that the zoning board does not have authority to increase this building by more than 50%.
If that's the case, do we have to listen to more of this?
That's an issue that we will have to determine when we get to a decision.
After this wetlands issue was raised, my client retained Michael Fishman, who happened to be the consultant that flagged the Wamboldt wetland that you relied on when you gave Wamboldt the 27-foot wetland setback for their pool and poolhouse. And he's here tonight to walk you briefly through his findings. I would simply ask you.
Where'd you get to that? What have you submitted, two cases?
Yeah, I've submitted two cases. The first case.
You're just giving us one copy?
Oh, I mean, I've given you one copy of the two cases, that's correct. Do you want more?
Yeah.
Okay. Sure.
One for me. We only have one for the file.
Yeah, I have one here.
Well, I think there's two of them that you submitted.
Yeah, I'll be glad to submit.
I dropped them off.
It ate copies, complete.
You have eight copies?
I dropped them off at the building.
When?
No, I don't think they were part of my submission. I brought those this evening, so I'll get you seven more copies, but.
I mean, I don't know if you need seven more, but you got to at least give one for me. The board's going to look to me for the legal issue.
Sure. I'll make sure that you, here, I'll give you my copies, Mr. DePietres.
You've been here enough before us, Mike, to know that we like more than one copy of things.
I usually, at the end of the process, usually give you my complete submission, Mr. DePietres. That's my practice as well. So I would ask two things. Number one, I understand that there's been submissions made tonight by David Amelita. I believe Mr. Flanagan mentioned he had put a memorandum in. I would like a short period of time, 10 days, to respond to those in writing. That's the first I heard from Mr. Amelita and some of the things I heard this evening for the first time. I think they're fresh in the record, I'd like a short opportunity to respond.
Probably head up to the work session if you want. Have more than 10 days.
That'd be fine, that'd be great. I just don't want the record closed. I want to make sure I can make a submission in writing and put this all in order so that it's digestible in one document. With that, I would like, if the board has a minute to listen to Mike Fishman, he'll just walk you very briefly through his report.
Good evening, for the record, my name is Mike Fishman. I'm with Barton and La Judas, a consulting firm in engineering and environmental consulting out of Syracuse, New York. A little bit on my background to start. I started my wetlands career here on Long Island back in 1990, working for the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation. Marty Shea came to work for the town of Southampton as a wetlands biologist. At that time, I took his chair at DEC and completed the wetlands mapping for Suffolk County, completed the first set of wetland map amendments for Nassau County, and also reviewed regulatory applications and performed enforcement actions under the state wetlands law for four years. I submitted a letter dated April 16th, addressed to the board, in which I review some findings from a study that we were asked to do by Robin Wamboldt. Ms. Wamboldt had retained our firm and myself to review the application materials submitted by the applicant, to review the wetland delineation in the field, and also to review the septic design. As indicated in my letter, I did review and I enclosed the copy or printout of the environmental resource mapper that was not intended as an indication of where the wetland boundary, the state wetland boundary was, only to identify that it was, in fact, a state-regulated wetland. Per the state freshwater wetland delineation manual published in 1995, a state wetland boundary is defined by the predominance of hydrophytic vegetation and hydrologic indicators. Soils are referred to if the first two criteria are not conclusive. Under Section 116-19.1 of the Village Code of Southampton, "Boundaries of wetlands are defined as," and this is a quote, "the outer limit of the vegetation specified in subsections A and B of the definitions of wetlands." And under subsection A of the definition of wetlands in the Village of Southampton code, it lists aquatic or semi-aquatic vegetation of the following types: emergent vegetation, including, among others, rushes, junkus species; and wet meadow vegetation, which depends upon seasonal permanent flooding, including, among others, sedges, carracks species, and rushes, junkus species. The applicant's property has a dense and dominant growth of soft rush, as I identified in the letter and in the photographs that I enclosed with the letter, as junkus effusus and tussock sedge, carrack stricta. I would like to note, Mr. Amelita, I'm sorry? Amelita, I'm sorry. Mr. Amelita indicated two texts, McGee and Tyner. My initial training in wetlands plant identification was done under the direct tutelage of Ralph Tyner. I know him personally. Whereas, I would certainly agree, identification of most carrack species requires a hand lens, if you will, to look at very, very fine characteristics. Tussock sedge is a particularly unusual sedge in its growth form. It's identifiable by its tussock, by its patch alone, particularly because of its predominance and common nature on Long Island. Based on the definition, the boundaries of wetlands does not indicate in the boundaries of wetlands definition a predominance of vegetation. It simply indicates the presence of such vegetation. It does not indicate specifically carrack stricta or junkus effusus, which I identified, but only junkus species and carrack species. And Mr. Amelita did not dispute that either of them were not junkus or carracks. He simply disputed whether they were soft rush, junkus effusus, or carrack stricta, tussock sedge. It was my conclusion from my inspection that the wetland boundary delineated by N Consultants in 2009 is inaccurate and does not represent the actual wetland boundary. in 2009 is inaccurate and does not represent the actual wetland boundary on the site as defined by either New York State DEC's wetland delineation manual or the Village of Southampton definitions. The wetland boundary depicted on the site plan depicted, or submitted with the application under represents the actual area of wetland on the applicant's property fairly significantly. The accurate wetland boundary is actually up to about 50 feet west of the western edge currently delineated on the 2009 N Consultants delineation. Thus, the 150-foot construction setback and the 200-foot septic setback also must be shifted 50 feet roughly to the west, which actually shifts the 200-foot setback off the property and much of the 150-foot setback off the property. Referencing the photographs from Google Earth, yes, I certainly allow that the photographs were taken in two different seasons. However, experienced interpreters of aerial photographs will can plainly see that the vegetation in the earlier photograph is largely shrub and tree vegetation. My client, Ms. Womboldt, also indicated to me that she certainly knew that there were shrubs and trees there, and I in fact observed shrubs and trees there when I did my delineation of Womboldt's deline, of Womboldt's wetland when I was there in 2009 preparing her application for her swimming pool and poolhouse. I noted that because I was trying to see where the edge of the state wetland was, if I could make any observation of that from her property line. And I recall it being completely closed off with shrub and tree-sized vegetation. It's plain to see in the second photograph, none of that vegetation remains. It's also plain to see that in the ground-level photographs. I should also indicate that even if the wetland boundary had not been changed, that clearing has occurred within 100 feet of a state-regulated wetland. It's a wetland violation. Clearing also took place within a Village of Southampton-regulated wetland and the 125-foot regulated adjacent area to the wetland without benefit of a permit pursuant to section 116-19.2 of the Village Code. The septic system review, I will say first off, I am not a septic engineer, I'm not an engineer of any kind, however, I do work, I've worked for two companies over the last 14 years that specialize in wastewater design, including the design of septic systems. So I do have some experience in reviewing septic plans. The septic system designed and submitted by the applicant illustrates an alternate sewage disposal system for high groundwater conditions, which is appropriate for the site. Location does not meet, however, the site condition requisites outlined in section 5-105(c)(4) of the Suffolk County Department of Health's standards for septic design. That section indicates that sewage disposal systems should be located in a front yard, that's for purposes of access for maintenance. A location other than a front yard will be considered in order to protect drinking water supply wells and to accommodate unique grading situations. Neither of those situations exist on this property, the property is served by public water, and there is no need for any special grading on this property. The applicant has proposed a septic system in a rear yard which does not conform to the county standards. The county standards do not indicate that exceptions to the front yard placement are allowable for wetlands protection, only for the protection of drinking water and for special grading situations. In addition, and this is more a concern perhaps for the county, I admit, but county standards require that a grade, detailed grading plan with one-foot contours be submitted if there is less than seven feet of groundwater beneath the septic system, which is the case here, and no such plan has been prepared. And I do want to add one more note, on the site plan submitted for this permit, there is a setback, a 150-foot setback, which is sketched from one point on the wetland. However, if you take that 150-foot setback from another point on the wetland, and the 150-foot setback applies to every single point that you could generate along the boundary of a wetland. Okay, so any construction must be 150 feet minimum from any point along the wetland boundary. If you go to the very northern point of that wetland, generate a 150-foot radius around it, you're cutting four feet off the proposed house footprint. The house is actually within 150 feet. And just to briefly note some of the comments Mr. Emelida made, the two references he mentioned, McGee and Tyner, are both standard field guides for identification of wetland plants, neither of them are regulatory guides, neither of them have any regulatory meaning, they are not referenced in any regulations. The Regulatory Decider on wetland indicator status for wetland plants is currently LIQFAR, which was published just last year, 2012. Prior to that, it was Root, which was published in 1988. But neither of those was referenced by Mr. Emelida. Mr. Emelida also indicated that removing diseased and damaged vegetation or trimming for health is allowed, that is the case, on a limited basis. The DEC has a guidance document, incidentally, that's been issued that allows for a certain percentage of vegetation to be removed without it being defined as clear-cutting. I would defy anybody to define what was done on the Edwards property as anything other than clear-cutting, and clear-cutting is regulated both by the village and by the state within the regulated adjacent areas and in wetlands. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Just one quick question. On Mr. Fishman, on the third bullet on page two, just the last sentence, could you explain how the topography, in this case, is a primary indicator of wetland hydrology?
Okay.
It seems to me as though it really is just a fact that it's a slope, it's directing runoff down that slope, but I just don't see the nexus of wetland hydrology.
There is a general slope towards the wetland, that's correct, and that's not generally considered in wetland parlance or in wetland jurisdictional determinations to be a hydrologic indicator. However, if you were to take a cross-section across the lawn, you'll notice that at a point just outside, I'd say, the wetland boundary, there is a hard break in the topography that's quite noticeable. And such a hard break in topography is a definition of wetland drainage, that is to say, topography that causes the creation of wetlands, causes the creation of, a collection of water within a certain area that creates prolonged saturation of soils. And under the federal manual for freshwater wetland delineation, that is considered a hydrologic indicator.
But can you make that assessment just based on topography?
Yes.
Difficulty with that, but we'll be looking at your report and-
Okay.
-reviewing that.
Uh huh.
Nick, you got it?
No questions?
Okay. Anybody else would like to refer to this application?
Thank you.
Do you have anything to say?
I'd just like to make a couple of brief comments, I think Mr. Emelida does too. First of all, Mr. Walsh totally mischaracterizes what I said in the application. I said it is not normal for this board, in the majority of cases, to consider more than a 50% expansion. I never said this board doesn't have the authority to do it, and I think you know that's the case because I myself have handled cases before this board where you've granted more than 50% expansion in special circumstances. So I would, I would take issue with that statement because it just isn't true. Second of all, quite a bit seems to be made about the fact that the same firm flagged wetlands in 1999 and 2009. Well, gentlemen, that's a 10-year difference, and it's not at all unreasonable to assume that wetlands boundaries may change over the course of 10 years. And much has been made of the fact that we don't have N Consultants here presenting information. Well, the information that they presented is what's shown on the, on the survey and the site plan submitted with the application. And furthermore, we have the village's own consultant who submitted a memo agreeing with that wetlands line, and we have a third independent consultant, who was the former consultant for this village, verifying that wetlands line. And I think that's more than sufficient information to justify that that wetlands line is accurate. As far as zoning bonus is concerned, I've never heard that term as a term of art, but I will say, and I will reiterate my position, that the Village Code favors wetlands, favors the protection of wetlands, and therefore, we believe that that is something that can be taken into consideration even in a zoning context, because one of the things you have to consider in granting a variance is the effect on the environment and the benefit of the envi, the betterment of the environment, and we believe that that is certainly a relevant zoning consideration. Just a final point about the sanitary system, obviously, in order for us to bring this project to completion, we would need to get health department approval, and that, obviously, it could be a condition of any, of any approval that this board should deem fit to grant. That's really all I have to say at the moment. I would like the matter, if at all possible, to be closed for written submissions only. I think we've heard enough testimony, but I'll defer to Mr. Emelida if he has any additional comments on this substance.
I'll be brief, I just want to respond to a couple of comments made by Mr. Fishman with respect to my testimony. He read the literal, the literal definition of boundary of a wetland as being the outer limit of vegetation. In, and this implies a boundary, not picking isolated cases of species scattered about. There's no way you can draw a boundary around linking isolated cases and call everything in at a wetland when there's no dominance, there's no hydrology, there's no hydro soils. It doesn't make sense. Literal meaning of, the literal reading of this definition doesn't make common sense. One has to use judgment. A wetland boundary is not a zoning boundary, it's not a legal boundary, it's a boundary that is determined by common sense and application of, of principles that are contained in the manuals. The Tyner manual is probably the bible, it is, 1988, dated 1988, but it contains a very detailed key system of how one determines a wetland boundary and how one determines what is a wetland and what isn't. That's what you use. You go through the keys on this property and it is not a wetland, plain and simple. It isn't. Mr. Fishman claims that the junkus effusus is an obligate species. It is only on one list, that's the 2012 Army Corps of Engineers list. I do not know that the village has adopted that as its official wetland plant list, that plant list applies to federal projects and for federal permits, not necessarily applying to the Village of Southampton. So that comment can stand on its own, but the sources that the village have used through the years don't classify junkus effusus as an obligate, meaning a mandatory wetland species. And even if, even if it, if it did, those occurrences out on the field shown in the photos are so sparse and so discontinuous, one could not possibly draw a boundary, call it a wetland. Mr. Fishman made several other comments which were inaudible to me, so I really can't comment on much more than that. Thank you.
I have a question for anybody who might-
Yes.
...want to answer it. If one were to clear-cut a wetland, would you expect it to eventually have more or fewer characteristics of a wetland? Would it get wetter or drier?
When you mean clear, clear, okay. Would you mean clear-cutting a wetland? You mean cutting everything down to ground level?
As, as was alleged, the wetland was clear-cut, so what would it be the result? Would it become more wet because plants weren't absorbing the water, or would it become more dry because it was more exposed to the sun?
Well, it depends, it depends on the species.
Ah.
Okay. In, in, for example, one technique to rid a property of phragmites is to clear-cut it. There is a residual seed bank lying among the roots of the phragmites, but they can't get the sun because the phragmites shoots up first and shades them, they never sprout. If, so one theory goes, clear-cut the phragmites and we'll get the other, we'll get the good wetland species. It depends on the species, there's no simple answer.
Species that we might have had here is what I was interested in, I guess they weren't phragmites, I'm guessing.
Okay, on this property, there are no phragmites.
Right.
Okay, so that's maybe not a good example. Again, it depends on what's, on what's residual dormant lying, lying in the ground. You know, in theory, if one clear-cut, one might, but it would depend on the hydro, hydrologic conditions. Wetlands depend, depend on hydrology. This, if you don't have sufficient saturated soils, you don't get wetland vegetation. You will get vegetation that's maybe tolerant of wet conditions, the fecult, what we call fecultative, they can, they can live in wet and they can live in dry, but it's, there's no, there's no simple answer to that question, unfortunately. I probably didn't help you, but-
I looked at the photos, and there are some summertime photos and a wintertime photos, and if you look closely at the wintertime photos, I mean, you can spot the trees even though they're bare. So, you know, it seems to me that if it was clear-cut, all the trees would have gone too, but, so, I don't know if underbrush was cleared out or not, but definitely the trees are all still there.
The opposition alleges that the cutting occurred since 2010, because the last, the earliest photo that, or the most recent photo they offer, aerial photo they offer, is in September of 2010, if I have my dates correct. So that had to have happened within the last two years. You're out there, I don't see any evidence of any vegetation being, being cut. I don't, I don't see stumps, I don't see, I don't see any of that. So I really don't know, I can't say what was cut, there's no physical evidence of anything being cut.
Thank you. Any, any other questions? All right, thank you.
Maybe I can qualify that. I did ask my clients about the cutting, and the only thing they've done, according to them, over the last several years, there were some cherry trees that were dead and diseased, which they disposed of, and there was some wisteria that was involved, which they disposed of. But that fits within what Mr. Emelida has represented before, that that would be a permitted activity. Also, there's one thing I should have mentioned before, which I really take offense at, and that is a suggestion that we backed into this design, that the 150-foot setback was designed so as to make this building fit. Well, as a matter of fact, it's exactly the reverse. The first thing we did was to establish these jurisdictional boundaries and then make the building fit them. That's the way we did it, I can tell you, because that's how I directed it to be done. So it was not the way, not the other way around.
Do you have a comment again, please? You had your hand up, I thought maybe you wanted to say something.
Again, Mike Fishman, representing Robin Womboldt. With regard to your question, sir, regarding the clearing of vegetation, yes, because all plants take water out of the ground through their root systems, and generally, larger plants take more water, that's not universal, but it's a good rule to go by. Mature red maple, eight inches in diameter, can pull 200 gallons of water out of the ground every day. Okay? And some mature trees can hold several thousand gallons of water. So yes, when you clear, clear-cut an area, the soil is apt to be moister and wetter because that, that moisture is not being pulled out of the ground by that vegetation, that's true.
So we would see more plants that were associated with wetlands?
Potentially, yes. And that is, that is possible, and that can cause the enlargement of a wetland area over time, because the soil would be saturated for a longer period of time. So that is quite possible.
What's the other works, whether way around two? If more trees and shrubs and plants grow up in a wetland area, it could diminish the size of the wetland.
That's quite right. Over, over time, wetlands do dry out as they mature with their communities, that's, that's a process of natural, natural succession.
So, you want to close this to written comments only?
Yeah, I would make a motion to close the public hearing, subject to submission of written comments prior to the April 16 work session.
May, May 16.
Pardon?
May.
I'm sorry, what is the date of the May work session?
I have to think about that. What's the fourth Thursday in May? I think it's the 20th.
I think it's the 14th is the work session, but I'm not, I think the 23rd is the meeting.
I think you're right. I'll have to look it up. 23rd is a Thursday because May starts on a Wednesday.
Okay.
So it'll be the 14th.
Third.
14th of May.
May prior to the May 14 work session.
Do we have a motion?
A motion to-
Close except for written submissions. By May 14.
By May 14.
All second.
All favor.
Just one quick comment, can I just make one quick comment since there are, everybody's here? You know, we were, were expecting to get written submissions by the May 14 work session. I don't want to mislead anybody into thinking that there'll necessarily be a decision on May 23. May 23, because we're going to have to review those submissions and then make a decision and then write a decision. Whether all that can happen between May 14 and May 23, who knows?
Okay. I think we're clear on that, right?
Yep. I just wanted to make it so nobody will be surprised if we don't have a decision on May 23.
You okay?
I think I'll join you.
Yeah.
Nine o'clock.
No, I'll wake up at nine thirty.
She's going to be calling up soon. She'd be calling soon.
She should be calling in a minute, yeah. That brings us down to case number 2772, Caton's Neck 2 LLC, 465 Caton's Neck Lane, for the applicant. This, I believe, is the extension or the movement of a dock, right? No? This is not the dock application?
This is the dock application, but...
That's been around for about a year?
Don't confuse it with the previous dock application.
No. Sorry. The dock.
The dock. The dock.
Getting the members of the board, Brant Reiner from Interscience, on behalf of the applicant, Caton's Neck 2 LLC. I'm here before you tonight, almost exactly a year after we first presented a project to you similar to this. Previously, we were looking to remove the existing dock that legally exists and relocate it in a southerly portion of the shoreline. The applicant has since withdrawn that application and has reconsidered the options for this dock and has chosen to reconstruct the existing dock in its current location. The reconstruction will include the removal of the existing dock, which has untreated, I'm sorry, which has treated materials, and the reconstruction will include replacement of the existing dock in its current configuration, as was legally approved by the board in 1996 as part of decision 1998. And the new dock will have all untreated tropical hardwoods and will have the same exact configuration as was previously approved by this board. The dock extends, the dock consists of a four-by-41 fixed pure catwalk with a four-by-16 ramp down to a six-by-20 float, which is fairly standard in the town and village of Southampton. The dock itself will extend only 10 feet landward of the mean high watermark ergo, which is also mentioned in a decision that was issued by the board in 1996, that the village jurisdiction ends at the mean high watermark. So we are therefore asking for the village to reapprove the 10-to-12-foot section of the dock that exists in the village's wetland jurisdiction. Before you have a package of materials which shows the dock design configuration. That dock design is taken directly from the plans that were approved by this board in their decision from 1996. Again, a copy of the decision is in that package that I just submitted to you as well. And there's all, the town trustees permit that was issued prior, as well for the existing dock, is included in that package. We have applications pending with the Southampton Town Trustees, New York State Department of Environmental Conservation, Department of State, and the Army Corps of Engineers, and we expect those permits to, those permit reviews to be coming shortly. If you have any questions for me, I'm here to answer them. Otherwise, I'd ask that you approve this dock, approve the reconstruction of this dock as was previously approved.
I have one question. Is he sure this time?
That's a valid question, and until we receive all approvals from these agencies that are currently pending, I would say absolutely yes.
Absolutely yes was your answer.
Until we receive all approvals.
So it's the same dock in the same location, the same dimensions, with different wood?
Using untreated materials.
Does that need a variance, really? You're just rebuilding the same dock in the same location?
The wetland regulations do not specifically state whether or not a variance is required. We are here before you tonight because of that unclarity. We're just asking.
We just want to be sure.
We just want to be sure, absolutely.
That's all, Rick?
Pardon?
Do they need a variance, really, or?
A wetland special permit, it's not a variance.
Okay.
I would assume that the building department interprets the code as requiring a wetlands permit for reconstruction. I'm not aware of anything that accepts that from a permit, are you?
No, and that would be consistent with other agency regulations as well.
Have you looked at this?
I have. I have no questions. I think, you know, one of the enlightening things is just to look at the photographs of the existing installation, and they're going to put that back without the treated materials and in exactly the same location.
Is there anyone out in the public who'd like to refer to this application? No, there is not.
Adjourn it for decision. This chick will have to write something up.
I move you adjourn this application for decision.
All second.
All favor.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Dan Hall. I'm with Land Use Ecological Services. I'm the environmental consultant for the owner, acting as his agent this evening. The application for you was presented by Gary Walco of Mettler Construction. We prepared the project plans and we obtained the other authorizations for this project. This project is an existing dock facility. It's currently four-foot by 36-foot pier with a four-by-12-foot ramp and a six-by-20 float. The essence of this application is to extend the dock 40 more feet seaward to obtain adequate water depth. Currently, the float sits in approximately one and a half, two feet of water, which is not adequate water depth for safe navigation or environmental impact on the Bentec community of Hedy Creek. We have obtained the New York State DEC permit, Army Corps of Engineers, and New York State Department of State. We have an application before the Southampton Town Trustees, and speaking to Fred Havermeyer today, there's a, going to be a board inspection for this project shortly. The end of the dock's been stated by the surveyor for their inspection. I'll answer any questions the board may have or any public may have on this application.
So this is going to be the same dock in the same location, but extended out by how many feet?
Forty.
Forty feet, yes.
Well, plus a 12-foot ramp and a 20-foot float, correct?
Yes, the ramp and float were there previously. They're there now.
Okay.
They can remove seasonally, but they should be there now. So it's just this 40-foot...
It goes from 68 to 108 feet.
That's correct.
You're using like non-treated?
Yeah, that's the requirement of trustees, and that's what we plan to utilize for this project, non-treated timber. I have copies of the affidavits I present.
You're waiting to hear from the town trustees?
That's correct.
But you've already heard from the other?
Yes, I have New York State DEC, Army Corps of Engineers, and New York State Department of State approvals. I can present them to the board at a, if they'd like, not this evening, but I can present at a particular time if the board would like to mail them in.
So the only thing they need now is approval from us and from the town trustees?
That is correct.
So how many feet of water does it get you this?
This brings us up to about two and a half feet of water where the float is.
So you gain a foot of water, maybe?
By 60 feet.
A little over a foot of water, yep, which is the necessary required water depth for the New York State DEC.
Is that high tide or is that low?
That's it, low, extreme low, mean low, low water. And I should also want to note that I didn't mention, but the float is going to be chucked. So during extreme tide events, if it were to occur at this location, the float would never rest on the bottom or come in contact with the bottom.
What kind of boat are they going to put?
They put a small boat there.
Eighteen or nineteen footer?
Right.
And two feet of water?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that'd be fine. And I just, I did...
Put a half, it gets you sometimes.
I did look at it. There's another dock across to the northwest, pretty far away, that's 600 feet away, that's similar length. I don't know the address of that property, but it's visible on satellite imagery.
That's across the creek?
It's across the, not the finger of the creek, it's across the...
Can't be across the creek.
No, it's totally here. The project site is, the project site, is it there? This is the dock I'm speaking of.
I know there's one, there was one around the corner toward the left, and his boat at low tide would sit in the bottom.
Right, that's not...
It could only go out between three feet either way of high tide.
Right, that's not...
He had to make sure he was back in.
That's what they're trying to avoid here, is, you know, for navigation and impacts on the environment.
I've been grounded in there a couple times at the Walker Show.
It messed up the environment.
We did, you know, we're going to try and build all the dock we have here, because we did do a study on any other location for a dock at the site would result in a much longer dock and more impacts on the wetlands.
If he has an outboard, he can easily get him there.
He could trim it up or...
Two and a half feet is fine.
Yes.
Foot and a half's a little bit too lippy.
Right.
If you have a real low tide.
Right, I mean, he could probably navigate a foot and a half, but then that brings in other questions that are not prop dredging, right?
Is that silting in pretty rapidly or running out?
I don't always go in there at high tide, I don't go in there when the tide is low. You can't go too far in with tide as low.
Maybe I'll shrink that basin shallow where it used to be, you know?
Yeah. He should be dredged probably in some places. Rick, you have anything? Chick?
Yeah, just kind of an observation and a question. In addition to the dock, which I think we've established we don't typically regulate beyond the high watermark into the water room, so in this case, it's really just an existing dock that's remaining where it is. But this also includes removal of phragmities, it looks like. Is that part of the...
That's correct, yes, selective, right, selective cutting of the phragmities. What that includes is just cutting the phragmities several times during the growing season, allowing the native vegetation to reestablish. Walking the site during the growing season, I did notice there were other species in there that would succeed in growing up a lot higher and shedding out the phragmities if that were to take place.
I was curious, what other species did you observe? Because I can't quite read the elevations.
There were some groundsel bush up near the top, there was some bayberry. Bayberry's not a wetland species, but I mean, that's up near the edge to groundsel bush.
Any wetland indicators?
Well, the groundsel bush is a wetland indicator.
In addition?
There's down closer to the intertidal zone, there's some spartina alterniflora and patens and stichulus in certain areas, especially around a point. This is, this part of the project is morty, take part, not necessarily in the shoreline where the dock is, although there is some phragmities there. It's more around the bend where there's a significant area of vegetation that's phragmities and overgrown.
I'll just, the question is, when you are able to control the phragmities, what vegetation do you expect will come in?
I would expect alterniflora, patens, the stichulus, and then groundsel bush to take over.
And are the elevations suitable for those species?
They are, because the high watermark on this project plan, most locations goes pretty much up to the sea wall, the timber wall, the wood retaining wall. The spring high watermark definitely goes up to the wood retaining wall.
And I guess I assume that the phragmities doesn't stop at the property line, it goes along the entire shoreline, across the adjacent properties. Is there any measure to control encroachment back into this property by phragmities off-site?
No, they don't have, they couldn't, they haven't coordinated any event with that, with the neighbors.
A root barrier or anything of that nature?
Nothing's proposed this time.
Yeah, I quite honestly have not had a chance to go out to the site, but I would like to observe it and just may look for some additional information on how we'll be able to promote other replacement vegetation, if indeed it would be intertidal and high marsh, I think that would certainly be a good thing. And you might want to consider a root barrier.
Okay, so what indicated in the plan is the phragmities be cut 18 inches above grade, and it's to take place for four growing seasons.
That's all I have.
Has anyone out in the public who'd like to refer to this application? We're going to have to wait until the chick has a chance to go out and take a look at it, right?
I'll certainly report back before the work session. In general, I don't see any real problems, so, you know, if everything checks out, I'll drive in for the questions.
We could have a decision by next month, possibly.
Yeah, we'll advise you at the work session and then determine if...
Do you hold it open or you want to close it?
You could adjourn it for decision, subject to any additional information, which our environmental assessment might, environmental consultant might require.
I move you adjourn for decision, subject to any information submitted by our environmental consultant.
All second.
All favor?
All right. Thanks. Yes, so you know, we did the same thing with our family trust, which we heard before you arrived. So if there's any more you want, we're still offering for that.
Other than the application, case number 2774, Douglas Taylor, 101 First Neck Lane.
Okay, from the applicant Gilbert G. Flanagan, 21 South Main Street, Southampton, New York. Also Lisa Poyer and Emily Rivee from Interscience. I believe an affidavit, a posting, and mailing were already submitted before the commencement of the hearing, so they should be part of the record. This is an application, as you know, for dimensional relief to permit construction of a tennis court and then in a definitional front yard and an interior flagpole lot. One thing I'll state at the outset is that earlier today, I did submit some additional information, and one of the things I submitted was an amended site plan, which now shows a 40-foot setback of the proposed tennis court from the north property line, and by doing that, we have eliminated the need for a variance from the north property line. And the reason I say that is even though this is a private road, it is... And the reason I say that is even though this is a private road, it is what the village would class as a non-access private road. And in support of that, I have a-
They just moved it up five feet toward the south, right?
Moved it five feet further south. So under the code, if you have a front yard on a non-access private road, you have to observe the rear yard, sorry, it's set by plus ten feet. So in this case, given the size of the lot requirements, thirty feet, so now we're forty feet, we don't need a variance. And just so that there's no question that this is, is or is not a non-access private road, when I represented my client when he purchased it, that's one of the things I wanted to be sure of. And I, in his policy of title insurance, there's an, an actual statement to the effect that we enjoy no access over that private road. So I'd like that to be part of the record. So therefore, that particular variance could be being withdrawn. So therefore, we had then left with a variance to locate the tennis court in the easterly portion of the property. Now, as you can see, as I've said, this, this lot is a flagpole lot. And as you know, the, the front yard and the rear yard can be determined based on existing improvements, or if that's not the case, then by the determination of the owner. I believe that the building department has deemed the east yard to be a front yard, primarily because of the location of the swimming pool in the west yard. This is a point of information, and I think it may be relevant later on. If the swimming pool were not located where it is, if it were located either to the north of the house or to the east of the house, this would then, this location would then become a rear yard, and we wouldn't need any variances at all. So this, I would consider this a, more of a technical situation, as opposed to a situation where you have a front yard that fronts on a street and there's the obvious question of public visibility. This is an interior parcel. And as I say, if we were to relocate the swimming pool to the other side of the house, we could then do this all, we wouldn't have to be here. But that obviously would involve a considerable additional expense, and I'm not sure that when you weigh and balance the equities, that that would be warranted. We also submitted some photographs that Interscience prepared. Photograph, an area photograph showing the subject lot and tennis courts that are located in proximity to it. We also submitted a copy of the tax map that shows tennis courts in the immediate vicinity. In fact, the, the radius map we submitted, I believe, shows four of them. If you take a look at that, you'll, you'll notice that there are virtually every property near this property has a tennis court. Now, it's true that we need a variance technically because of, as I say, where the swimming pool is located. But if you look at the radius map, which was part of the application, and I see that the neighbors to the east are here. You'll note that where we're proposing a tennis court directly faces where their tennis court is, at a thirty-foot setback from the property line. So we would submit that that, you know, what makes it better neighbor for one tennis court than another tennis court. One thing we did, I did discuss with, with the neighbors is that they were concerned about the sinking. Now, as you may know, and as the record should indicate, this application was preliminarily presented to the planning board, and I think you have in the file, it was submitted today, and I think you had it before. A letter from the, actually from the planning board indicating that it favors this location. So I, I think that that, that's a relevant factor. The plans that the planning board looked at showed a sinking of three feet, six inches below grade for the tennis court, which is in accordance with their general practices. And I understand from Mr. and Mrs. Lowey that their court is sunk a little bit more than that. And so we would, my client would agree to sink it to a depth of four feet, which is about the, generally, the planning board considers a sinking between three and four feet. We would sink it an extra six inches to bring it down to four feet, so as to be consistent. I'm sure the planning board wouldn't have any objection, wouldn't have any objection to that. We would submit that this is, it would be typical of the area. As you can see, the, the nearest neighbor to the south, that, that setback is, is over ninety feet. And that exceeds any setback that's required in this area. This is the only dimensional setback and front yard setback we're looking for. In fact, if this were a rear yard or a side yard, the minimum required would be thirty feet, and we're showing a thirty-five-foot setback. Now, the plan that was submitted to you and also looked at by the planning board showed a staggered double row of evergreens around the, basically all sides of the court. And there is a fairly substantial hedge located between this property and the property to the east of it. So I think that that would perform an adequate screening function, both visually and in terms of sound, especially if the court is sunk to a depth of four feet. We also submitted some drawings from Interscience that shows that if we were to shift the court any further south, and I see no benefit in doing that, there are some mature trees in that area which would be disturbed. So this location fairly well fits in with what is existing on, on the site. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. I believe there may be some comments from the audience, but I think that the materials submitted relatively speak for themselves. If you have any questions, me, I'll be happy to try to answer them.
Rick, you have anything?
One comment or a suggestion for an additional submission. If, and we, of course, we haven't discussed this application yet, but if the board were favorably inclined to it, we need to be careful that we don't set a precedent for tennis courts on flagpole lots that, that cannot accommodate a tennis court in compliance with zoning. I had some negative reactions to this application when I first skimmed it for that reason, until the applicant's attorney presented his argument tonight and pointed out that, you know, made a statement that if the swimming pool were relocated, the tennis court, that would change the front yards, which lot line, as you know, on a flagpole lot, you can elect a front lot line. In this case, that election is problematic because of the swimming pool. But I think we should at least have an Interscience, let's see, are they the ones that did this?
Yes.
I think we should at least have, for the record, an Interscience sketch like this showing the westerly, if I got my direction right, the westerly line as the front lot line with a relocated swimming pool. And to, and to thereby establish his, you know, clearly established by-
Fair enough.
-by sketch plan that his argument is accurate. So I would ask that that be submitted.
No problem. Happy to do it.
We have anyone out in the public who would like to have heard of this application?
Yes.
Could you use the microphone, please?
Oh, sure.
You can pick it up on the film, so you can watch yourself next week and tell it.
Okay. Yes, I'm John Lowey and my wife Barbara, we live at seventy-five First Meadow Lane. We are the eastern, we are on the eastern side of the applicant's property. Let me start by saying, we have no objection to the applicant having a tennis court. And we're, and we, we are happy to hear that the, that the court will be sunk four feet instead of three feet, three feet, six inches. Our, our court is sunk nearly five feet, and this is a photograph taken this morning. It's actually four feet, nine inches. And, and our, our principal objection is really to the location of the court. It's the, moving it from, to thirty-five feet from our property represents approximately a sixty-one percent variance, which I think is substantial. And this is the applicant's front yard. It's an argument you can, that, that Mr. Flanagan has made about the, the pool could be moved, but I think in all, in all logic, the pool is not going to be moved. So what we're really talking about is, where is this tennis court going to be? And is it going to be only thirty-five feet from, from the boundary to our property or perhaps farther away? If you look at the, the plot of the property, I think there is adequate room that the court could be moved at least, at least thirty feet farther away, which would represent much less of a variance than what is being asked for. Again, we don't object to the tennis court, and we, and we're happy that it's going to be at least four feet. We would request that the, it be sunk more than four feet, and we'd request, again, that it be moved farther away from the property, which would be far less of a variance.
Your property is just to the east?
Yes.
And the tennis court is right on the lot line as well?
Yes, but that is our backyard, as opposed to the front yard in this case.
It's closer than thirty-five feet to the lot line?
Pardon me?
Your tennis court is closer than thirty-five feet to the lot line?
Thirty feet, yes.
I mean, with the fact that you've got tennis court, against tennis court, I mean, it's not like the tennis court was up against your house.
True.
That would certainly be a factor, or even up against your pool, where you might be sitting around taking a nap or something.
Well, it is, our, our pool is right next to our tennis court, so-
Between the house and the tennis court.
Yes, true.
And they're adding double screening besides sinking it, too.
Yes, true.
I mean, if they moved it over another thirty feet, how-
Oh, you mean towards, it's just a driveway.
Or this way, yeah.
Exactly. Farther away from our boundary.
Be right up against or even into the parking area.
Well, it, it could be, all I'm saying is, it could certainly be plotted farther than thirty-five feet. It wouldn't necessarily have to be a full thirty feet, but from my view of the property, pardon me?
Would five feet make a difference?
Well, it would help.
I think they could get five or ten, it'd look like ten anyway.
Every foot, every foot would help. I mean, as, but from what I see, there is adequate room to move it at least twenty or thirty feet, so-
I don't think twenty or thirty feet.
No?
It's going to put it right against the house.
Okay, all right.
We could probably get them to agree to move it five feet. Probably get them to do that.
Let's go eight.
How about seven and a half?
We don't have a measurement from the edge of where the proposed tennis court and the sunken part, and he has a courtyard driveway there, what that distance is, that could, you know-
It'd look to be about the same as this thirty-five, it's probably about thirty feet to this corner here, maybe twenty-five or thirty.
I mean, it appears, well, because they're going to want enough room to get screening in there, too.
Right.
It's going to put it right into the parking.
Yeah.
Maybe five feet to over.
What's that?
It's twenty-five feet.
Ten, maybe.
Between here and here?
I think it's ten, they put it right into the parking lot.
Ten feet is better than, than no feet.
No, I'd like to have a measurement, if I knew what it was.
You know-
Yeah.
Let's go eight.
So, you know, it's twenty, it's, the distance between here and the parking area scales to twenty-five feet.
Twenty-five.
Right.
But then, but that's a, that's a driveway, which is a very large driveway, and quite distant from the house.
The planting bed, yeah, that's-
I mean, you wouldn't want to put it close and then have the planting bed go right into the-
No, that's right, that's right. You know, it looks as if this is going to be held open for all purposes anyway, because we're going to submit the so-called as-of-right drawing. So let me go back to the applicant and talk to him about how far we can adjust it.
Okay.
Okay.
Do that.
Thank you, please.
Does anybody use these things, anyway?
Yeah, I think we submitted this, I don't know if it shows what the, what that- Sorry.
Meadow Lane, all day and night, I was like, oh.
Yeah, just so you know, we can tell you what the, what the, what the planting buffer is.
It's about, you know, eight feet?
It's about eight to ten feet. That's what the plant, the planting-
Say ten, if anything, better.
Right, the planting buffer.
So you have about twenty-five.
Twenty-five.
Right, so about-
You don't want the tennis court to be right up against the planting buffer.
No, that's, that's right, that's exactly it. But I will, I will talk to the client and see if we can make a modest change.
We have to have the other sketch anyway, so-
Yes, so we'll-
Looks like they can get twenty-three on it.
Yeah, yeah. Anybody else would like to have heard of this application? So I think we're, just going to hold this open and-
Keep it open.
I'm going to be holding this application open for all purposes.
One second. Hold on, Taylor?
All right.
All right.
Should make a little tennis court pervious.
Play.
Yeah, I was going to grab a whole, but I don't know.
Like a basketball court.
Is clay pervious? Not really.
So you got this one right here.
Is he playing? Oh, you are. All right, who do we got here? Only the one percenter's here. Let's hope for the next one.
Next case is two seven seven five, Alex Rupers, one six nine zero Meadow Lane.
Lisa Poyer with Interscience on behalf of the applicant. Now, this property was formerly part of Linda Wagner's property, and it was recently subdivided back in two thousand and nine. The property used to contain a tennis court and accessory structures which were associated with her main residence next door. As part of the subdivision requirements, when it was sold, the tennis court was required to be removed, as well as all the accessory structures. Those have since been removed. The survey has not been updated since that time. So it still reflects the tennis court on the lot, on the surveys, but from photographs and site inspections, it has been removed and all the accessory structures. So right now, it's a vacant lot with the driveway through it. This project was before you, probably a couple years ago, when the driveway was originally located along this side of the property, along the western side. It was relocated to the eastern side, and that was through zoning board appeals variance, and with an application to the New York State DEC. At that time, the scenic easement area, what's this line, and it followed an arc down. At the time that the driveway was relocated, the scenic easement area was expanded. You have wetlands which were flagged on the north side of Meadow Lane, and the setbacks come in, and the hundred and twenty-five foot setback meet about where the edge of the scenic easement runs. As part of the hurricane and the superstorm Sandy, the area, especially in this lower area, was in about three to five feet of water for multiple days. And due to the flooding and the saltwater flooding here, a lot of the plants died. And they're basically dominated by invasive species, phragmities, you have honeysuckle, poison ivy. We found four native plants, individual little bushes located over here, that are actually located on a inventory survey that was submitted as part of the application. Current owner would like to do an active restoration and revert the area back to native vegetation, including bayberry, inkberry, all, all local native plants that your environmental consultant is familiar with. He wants to try and make it a little bit better, clean it up, look neater. It's, it's a mess. There's a row of frag, um, sorry, there's a row of privet right now that acts as the hedgerow, most of it's dead. There's some black pines in the property, some of it was higher, some of it was planted in lower areas, some of them are dead, some of them are alive. He wants to keep the ones that are alive just to act as additional evergreen screening. And then he wants to actively, you know, vegetate the area with all native vegetation. We had a preliminary meeting with Chick Voorhees, I went through the planning plan, with a few minor notation changes to some common names. We made those, we resubmitted an application to the board, and we're just here to listen to any comments you may have, or any additional comments Chick may have.
Well, there is now construction that's going on, right?
There's no construction going on right now. There's no application.
I did notice that the, the growth, like you stated, I guess, for like three and a half feet of the floodwater, must have killed everything, really.
It's, it's browned, the privet's dead, some of the-
It got beat up pretty bad.
And a lot of the plants, I don't know if you have the photographs there.
You think now if you-
Were uprooted and actually lying in there sideways.
If they reconstruct that and they go with the native species, do you think that would hold up to any future storm damage, better than what was there?
It'd give it a better chance. There'd be a, a better chance for the, the species to survive. You know, it's like tartarian honeysuckle, poison ivy, it's not valuable.
So there isn't anything that's on the property now?
I'm sorry?
There's nothing that's on the property now?
There's no structures on the property right now.
The tennis court out?
Tennis court is gone. I, I know the ser, the surveyor hasn't been there since it was removed. But I think there was a fire pit, there was a generator, all of that was moved onto the property to the west, that's-
The black pines are not native, are they?
No, some of them are going-
Some of them didn't die.
Some of them did. The ones that were actually a little bit lower in elevation died, and those are going to be removed. About half of them have died.
Why, why, just as a point, why do they want to keep those invasive species critters, and do they propagate?
The, the only species that they wanted to keep was the black pines.
Why, and do they propagate?
They're large.
They're, they're large, they're very substantial, they do act as screening right now, tall screening, as you can see from, yeah, from this comparison. They, they do act to add, you know, additional height to the buffer. The, the front bayberry hedge is going to be somewhat lower than the- The, the front bayberry hedge is gonna be somewhat lower than the privet hedge, and he wants to try and do a gradation of screening, lower along the road and then higher as you progress into the property.
Are you gonna bring any fill into the site, or just work with what's there?
Just work with what's there right now. I mean, there's gonna be disturbance to the soil, because you're gonna have to dig up the fragmites root mat, but it will be, you know, established back to the existing conditions.
And after that, you know what's gonna happen, do you have any plans for this property?
Like to build a house at some point, so it'll be back before you.
Doing a real landscaping.
We usually get the landscaping in though.
Well, he was before you, probably about two or three years ago, with an application, and it was heard, you know, a couple hearings, and the neighbor at the time objected to it, so he withdrew the application, and kinda going a different direction. So, he does have plans to develop it.
Just waiting on that neighbor to leave.
He did leave.
He did leave.
We have an easement here, so that's gonna kinda restrict the building a little bit, right, the scenic easement?
Yes.
It's just more than fine, though, right?
Yeah, it's, it's just the, that front eighty feet or so of the property.
Yeah, it's all, it's all within the front, not a setback, I think.
Which all falls within that hundred and twenty-five foot setback.
So, if they build, it's gonna be up to the south of that?
Correct.
And that driveway exists or not?
The driveway does exist, it's, it's cleared, there's like an RCA base course there. When it's developed, there's a whole drainage plan that was approved as part of the driveway plan for the board, but it's, right now it's like a construction entrance.
Is it pervious?
Right now it's pervious.
We shifted the driveway from the east, from the west to the east, and as part of that, there was a very extensive drainage plan.
Okay.
Because this was one lot, with the lot next door, there was no access on this property.
I see.
And the original property had it about in here, it was never cleared, and the new owner wanted it on this side, and we felt it was better along this side, makes a larger patch of wetland potential species in here.
Alrighty, as well.
Rick?
I am familiar with the site from both the Walkner subdivision, as well as the relocation of the driveway, and as Lisa said, they did come in for a pre-app, and I was able to review the plan at that time, so, you know, I think it's a very thorough landscape restoration plan. I don't really, Rob, I don't really see any problem with leaving the black pine, they're not terribly aggressive, they were the species of choice for many years, I've kind of fallen out of favor, and they are non-native, but it's not an issue to leave them. And, you know, I don't really expect that this landscape plan is gonna do a lot better if we develop the type of floods that we had for Hurricane Sandy, but it's certainly a good, you know, good restoration plan. So, you know, I'd be prepared to have this ready for the next meeting if the board's in agreement and we'll hear the comments.
That's good. Do we have anyone out in the public that would like to be heard of this application? So, hold it open, or close it for decision?
Turn it for decision?
Move the adjournment for decision.
One second.
Hold it, David?
Hi.
Thanks, good evening.
Thank you.
On the application, case number two seven seven six, Vincent and Ann Marie DeRamo, sixty-three Halsey Street.
Good evening, board members, we were this close.
Yes, you were.
My clients showed up two minutes after Mr. Voorhees did, and if they were here, we would have maybe got the first call on this, but nonetheless, Wayne Bruin, O'Shea Marsinson, going for the record, I submitted the necessary affidavit post and mailing. We're here this evening on property at sixty-three Halsey Street. It's a property that is located on a private right-of-way approximately one hundred and ninety feet west of Halsey Street, which is about four hundred and ninety-three feet south of Armon Street. We're in an R twenty zoning district, subject parcels somewhat rectangular in shape, it's twelve thousand eight hundred and eighty-nine square feet inclusive of the private right-of-way that gives access to this property, and ten thousand five hundred and fifty-three square feet exclusive of that right-of-way. The, the right-of-way, there's a very small neighborhood here, gives access to a few other parcels, in particular, the one parcel to our east that fronts on Halsey Street, it allows access, there's also an additional parcel to the northeast, as well as two other parcels to our north. The right-of-way is only fifteen feet in width, and it ends basically on the westerly portion of our property in a turnaround with a planted tree, and, and it's a quaint little neighborhood. In fact, something very unique, there is a garage at the westerly terminus of this right-of-way that has been split up in ownership and use by the adjoining neighbors, as well as the southerly part of that garage, the one unit or bay is, is owned by my client. We're here for several variances to do what is considered to be very modest additions. My clients, Mr. and Mrs. DeRamo are here, as well as Tom Fox, their architect, I'll have Mr. Fox actually explain the proposed additions. Historically, this property has been before this board, and there may be board members that may remember this. There was two prior applications, and both ended up with no substantive decision on the merits, they were both denied without prejudice. In two thousand and two, the Espositos owned the property, looked to do substantial additions to the west and north of the structure. That application was sidetracked due to several questions regarding violations related to the use of the garage, encroachments to the south, and, and more importantly, some technical requirements of whether their surveys and other documents properly reflected the area calculations necessary for the code. And as such, the board denied it without prejudice, and there was no further application ever made on that by the Espositos. My understanding is, they did clear up some of the violations, the encroachment to the south in particular, and the property was thereafter sold. In two thousand and nine, the Jernowskis made an application looking to do substantial additions to the northeast and the west of the subject dwelling. That plan was prepared and presented by an architect for the applicant at that time, however, they didn't translate any of the proposed additions or otherwise onto the survey, and the board, among other things, also denied it without prejudice because they didn't have, the survey and the plans didn't coincide, and there were a number of questions that were raised at that point. So, the board denied that application without prejudice, and no further application was made, and the property was then sold later to my clients. The property, as I mentioned, is somewhat trapezoidal or rectangular in shape, but the primary issue here, it, you would think first in its configuration, it might be considered as if it was a flagpole lot, and that the east-west depth to the property might consider a front and a rear yard accordingly. However, under your code, a street right-of-way, even a private right-of-way is considered a street, and as such, the boundary line of that right-of-way, that private right-of-way becomes the front lot line, and that is the front yard, so that it's not even the northerly line, it's actually the right-of-way line. And the rear yard is the south property line, which is opposite that street right-of-way, and thus the east and west property lines become the side yards. So, when you look at the property, the inherent practical difficulty with this site is, no matter what you do to the dwelling, it's not gonna meet the required front yard setback of forty feet from that street right-of-way. In fact, in some places, that street right-of-way is only, you know, eight feet from that turnaround So, like I mentioned, we have some modest additions, including a twelve-foot square foot addition to the northwesterly corner, there is a ninety-seven square foot mudroom addition to the southwesterly corner of the property, there is a seventy-six square foot second floor gable extension that requires a variance because of the setback, and we're also looking to do a second floor dormer, which, because of the rear yard setback being the south line, and the dormer being on the south facing line, would require a variance from the pyramid law. In addition, one of the questions here, we'll go back to the certificate of occupancy for the premises, there is a single-family residence, one sheer shed, excuse me, at the rear of the parcel, a swimming pool, patios, and an accessory gar, garage structure, which is this five-unit garage, with the southerly unit conversion to a studio and storage, no heating, sleeping, or cooking allowed in the accessory structure. So, there was a conversion of that garage space legally by the building department allowed it, and it was converted. Certainly, back in time, there were issues as to whether it was being used for sleeping, cooking, or otherwise, and that was part of the issues before. One of the things my clients realized when they were dealing with this property, and there were the issues that were identified in the past, it's very limited with the turnaround and, and the size of the property to have off-street parking, so one of the things my clients realized is that this garage space is not useful as it currently is, and part of the plans here are to convert that back to a garage, basically tear out the bathroom and all, everything else related to that garage. But to make it further usable and actually get a car in there, we're requesting that it be expanded three feet, and because of its location, basically a garage structure straddling the line, that's also a variance we need. What I'd like Tom Fox to do is basically describe the proposed additions, and then I'd like to point out a couple other matters related to this, Mr. Fox.
As Mr. Bruin said, I'm Tom Fox, I'm the architect working with the owners to do the additions to the building. I have some photographs of the existing house, I have six copies, which are probably useful to take a look at with regard to our elevations and plans. As Mr. Bruin had noted, it's a relatively difficult site in terms of the setbacks to build anything on the property. This is the outline of the property, this small trapezoidal area is really the only buildable space that the zoning would allow. The vast majority of the existing house is not within that buildable space, it is all within required yards, as the present zoning would require. The additions we're looking to do, floor plans. In the northwest corner, there's a small notch in the existing building, we would like to take the existing nineteen twenties floor plan with small rooms and try to open it up into a more functional space. In order to make the kitchen work better, we would like to square off the small notch in the north corner, northwest corner. We would like to remove the enclosure of the porch, what had been a front porch on the north side, open that back up into a porch again, and then improve the rear entrance at the northwest corner and, oh, sorry, southwest corner, and create a mudroom and laundry room space that we can enter the house through. That comprises all of the work on the first floor, on the second floor, there's presently a large dormitory, sleeping space that's in roughly two different sections, sleeping sections and a bathroom. We would like to regularize that into two actual bedrooms and relocate the bathroom. In order to do that with the roof slope, we would like to do a dormer on the south side in order to get headroom at the back, we want to leave the roof line in the front the same. Mostly for aesthetics, we would like to keep the house more or less in the same design vocabulary as it presently is, upgrade finishes and materials, but generally keep it looking as it does now. And just, we're looking at the elevations, this is, this is the dormer I was just discussing, the, there's a small piece of the gable that we would be extending, it's the existing roof line that we would extrude out a few feet over the new areas. This is the front porch that we're opening up, and again, this is the, the small area for the kitchen in the front corner. So, I think that comprises most of what we're doing, the garage being the other piece that we're requesting, the garage is now about nine feet wide on the interior, a little under nine feet, so we'd like to make that twelve feet, so we can actually get a car into it and be able to open the doors.
So, that entry that you see from the street, that closed entry that you see from the street, the gable roof on it, that's gonna go?
The, the gate, the roof structure will remain, but if you go in the front door, that is actually lower than the main level of the house, and it's a concrete slab, so it was at one point an open porch, so we are proposing adding, this is the roof that's existing right now, we're proposing adding columns and just...
You're just making it open?
Just take, make the walls go away.
It's a heated space now, and it'll be an unheated outside?
Correct, yes. Because for, for our plan, the back entrance is really the more important place to have a closet and place to, you know, drop things as you come in the house, the front is not that important, so we'd rather have the porch there.
Where is the back entrance?
Uh, the back entrance is, it's actually the, I call it the back entrance, it's actually the side of the house, but on the west side of the house, which is, you see the door of it here, it's this projection of about ninety-seven square...
It's sort of like a car parking area, it faces the garage.
Correct, yes.
But that front corner where the door is, to the right of the front door, over a little bit more, that, that is your bump, that's the part you're bumping out?
Yes, which is, you're looking at it, it, it's back a number of feet from the front face of the house, so, so this door is in that wall plane.
So, that entryway on the west side will now have a gabled roof rather than this...
Rather than the shed roof, and we would extrude the existing gable over to cover that shed.
I see, you're gonna move out the second story?
Yes, we'll, we'll pull the side, so it doesn't increase the footprint at that location, but it does increase the area above.
It just goes over what's there now?
Right.
Well, that entry is an increase in size.
The entry is, but there's no second floor over that.
Plus, you're gonna be squaring off that corner too?
Uh, yes, we're looking to square off this corner, which is also that corner.
And the southwest corner, which is where this door is gonna be?
Yes.
And that's where the four feet comes in?
Right.
It's presently, I think, a little over six feet, and it would be a little over four feet if you go from the right-of-way.
Now, four feet is the property line, is that correct? That's, that's...
No, it's from the street.
The driveway is like a, it's a community drive, it's a community driveway, right, so it's a...
It's from the street right-of-way line that's measured, you could also see, we asked the surveyor to plot it from the property line there too, so you can see the difference.
Yeah, from the property line is...
About two-foot difference in the property line. Is there any other questions for Mr. Fox at the moment?
And so far as the patio, that doesn't need any relief?
We asked the building department, and they said no.
You don't need any relief?
There's an existing patio there, and we asked if, if it's raised, if that made a difference, they said no.
And what about the pyramid law?
Yes, there are diagrams, if you have the first sheet of the drawings, that shows that the, the small twelve square foot area we've been talking about in the northwest corner is, the sky exposure plane slices through that at an angle, so there is a piece of this roof structure that is beyond the exposure plane, and the dormer as well in the rear is projecting into that.
What does that add up to for cubic feet?
Excuse me.
What does it add up to for cubic feet?
Uh, for cubic feet, the, the small addition on the north is a thousand forty-four cubic feet, and the rear dormer is three hundred and one cubic feet.
Your application says thirteen hundred and fifty-nine.
I think that's the three oh one plus the ten forty-four.
It's the sum.
Yep. We've had a lot of problems with that laws, is there a way to configure it differently? Is there a way to configure it differently?
Given that the footprint of the house, well, it seems almost completely outside of all the required boundaries or within the yards that would otherwise be required, so there's almost nothing you can do to it that won't require a variance of some sort.
That's number one. Number two is, given the configuration of, again, the configuration of the lot, but for the fact that the private right-of-way becomes the front yard, this becomes the rear yard. If it was a side yard, which this configuration sort of lends it to, it wouldn't, it would comply to the pyramid law.
Yes.
But just some other point, this is not dissimilar to any of the other development in this particular five-lot scheme. But more importantly, the impact on this proposed dormer is to the adjacent property to the south. And if you look at your tax maps and the aerial photographs we provided in the record, that's the Jesse Camacho and Lisa Combrink property. You'll see that their house is well, located well close to Halsey Lane, and it's a very deep lot. And in fact, this rear portion of the property is wooded. It's not used, it's wooded. That's number one. And back with some of the prior applications, I believe it was Mr. Esposito had actually encroached onto that property. That was all corrected. You'll see that there's a fence and a hedge along there. That's number one. Number two is, my clients have met with Lisa and Jesse regarding this application, and this evening I received a text, I received a phone message at my office, a phone message on my cell. I'm sure I have an email at home from Lisa who apologized for not being able to either come to the meeting or get a letter to you by tonight, but she asked me to represent to you that they have reviewed the plans and they have no objections to the application. In addition, we did receive, my clients did receive a letter. They met with many of the neighbors here, and one of our neighbors is here tonight as well. They met with the neighbors directly across the Feldmans, and we have a letter that says, "We've reviewed your plans and proposed additions, and we support your application, having no objections to the requested variance." So I have an original and copies for the board. My petition outlines many of our arguments, but it also outlines many of the things, if you were able to visit the site, the character, the area. This board is familiar not only with the prior applications on this property, but the two adjoining properties, one to the east, received variances for a substantial addition to their property, which was granted by this board as well as our property to the north. I do have copies of those decisions, if you all like. I have enough for everybody. Just for the record, you can see what the board decided and looked at through those. In particular, if you look at the Feldman property or the Hunt's property, you'll see, for example, the Hunt's house is set back 13 feet from the street right-of-way. The Feldmans likewise are very close. This is a very small, private right-of-way. The only other thing, my understanding, and I think Mr. Hunt wants to speak as well, is my client was asked about when construction would take place, being that this is a very tight right-of-way, and they have indicated, and they asked me to put on the record, that they would not do any construction until after Labor Day, so this would be done after the summer season as well. If you have any other questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Might be something here we might want to know about the pathology, where the parking's gonna be of construction vehicles and things like that. We can't really block that right-of-way.
No, but that's one thing I've got to mention here.
It's the last house in. If it was the first house in, you'd really have a problem.
Right. Certainly part of, there's two areas. One, one of the things that's being proposed here is to take out a hedge and enlarge the gravel parking area that's there to the southwest of the house, and that all, that whole area can become a construction yard. But I certainly understand, maybe we can, but I, my clients, I don't believe are at that point where they even talk to contractors and those details. But I think we could probably, if you want, have a condition.
We sometimes ask that those things be, you know,
Right.
Be conditions so far as.
I think that would be reasonable.
The agreement or approval goes. Because this is not like the house next door being built. This is a house being built in your lap more, you know, what I mean? I mean, this house is going up right now on Halsey Street, but they're on separate lots. They're not on little cul-de-sacs, so they can park on the property easily. Here, it's gonna be very hard to park on the property, except you say maybe that one little place.
Yes.
Two or three vehicles in there.
I think part of the issue is that, at least what I've heard from Mr. Hunt, is that the residents are not entirely there all year round, in particular on the off-season, so that will, by postponing any construction to the off-season, will help accommodate that, you know, in the first instance.
I just have one question. I just wanna confirm. In terms of the pyramid law variance, talking about a total of 1,359 cubic feet, at least according to the advertisement. Looking at the diplane diagrams on the first sheet of the architect's plans, I just wanna confirm. Okay, we have 1,444 cubic feet.
I think it's 1,044.
Yeah, that's what I said, 1,044. That relates to the pyramid law in relation to the unusual street situation.
Correct, yes.
Then we have 14 cubic feet, which again relates to the unusual street situation. And then the third one that I see is 301 cubic feet, and those three do add up to the 1,359. The 301 cubic feet is the only pyramid law variance that relates to the southerly line.
Correct.
Is that, that's what it looks like. Is that correct? Okay. That's all I have?
So the dormer, in other words.
Yeah.
Face the south. Anybody out in the audience who'd like to be heard?
My name's Paul Hunt. I own the property immediately to the north, on the other side of the right-of-way. We support the application. And your concern about the dump truck issue or the truck issue, if you look at the, call it the cul-de-sac, the circle in the back, with their parking as it currently is, and thinking about just parking along the side of the cul-de-sac in the winter, it shouldn't be too much of a problem. That would be my view.
I think that, you know, the additions are aggressive, and it does make the house function.
It's gonna bring up the neighborhood.
It looks good. It's great.
You've got a decent kitchen in there and two decent bedrooms.
I think we ought to say, if we approve it, that the pyramid law was compromised because of, you know, extraordinary circumstances.
Oh, yeah, that's why I was trying to clarify how that broke down, to make sure I understood how it broke down, because that would be an important factor. Also, that southerly neighbor stated that she didn't object.
Right, and if Mr. Hunt's for it, it must be alright.
Just in that regard, Ms. Combrink also indicated she would provide something to this board in writing tomorrow or.
Will we close this for decision?
It's okay with me?
I'm gonna close this application for decision.
Hold it favor? Meeting is over.